I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order. And the first thing is the pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of all, liberty and justice for all.
I certainly want to welcome all of our viewers on cable, and I want to welcome everybody in attendance here this evening. Actually, I shouldn't say cable. I probably should just say television.
There you go. It could be internet-based too.
It could be internet, too, right. The first item on our agenda, in a moment, I'm going to ask you all to join me in a moment of silence for Doris Krensky Perkins. Doris was very committed to the town of Plymouth. She served as a teacher. She served as chairman of the school committee. In fact, when I first got on the school committee, Doris was my chairman. She was also president of the Massachusetts School Committee Association and chair of the charter commission. So she has a great deal of commitment to the town of Plymouth. So in honor of Doris Krensky's memory, and certainly in support for her family at a time of need, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is also sad news. And that is that we have a member of the school committee who has been with us for quite a long time, and we would like to recognize Dennis Begley tonight. It's his last meeting at the school committee. And as well, we'll hear a little bit more about Dr. Wow, see, that Dr. Begley's. A little bit more about Dr. Begley's participation on the school committee in a minute from Dr. Maestas. But let me tell you that I believe, and I believe we believe, that this school district is better and improved because of Mr. Begley's commitment, his intelligence, his dedication, and the hours of service that he gave to the town of Plymouth. So it is our honor to thank Mr. Begley for all of his participation over the years that he's been here, and we would like to make a small presentation here this evening. Dr. Maestas.
Thank you, Dr. Sorensen. I'm not too many, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how many people realize that Mr. Begley and I were actually on the school council of South Middle School when I was the principal of Plymouth South Middle School, which is a long time ago. And that's when I first got to know Mr. Begley. And as time has gone on, he's, you know, he was on the school committee and been very involved in our community, educational community, as well as the town of Plymouth. And it's been an honor to work with Dennis all the years that I have. He is probably feeling a sense of relief because he won't have to hear from me anymore, or any of us for that matter. But it's been a pleasure working with you, Dennis. And I want to highlight that the position of school committee member is not just a commitment for the individual who won the election. It's an individual, it's a commitment to the family. And I know your family is here tonight, and I want to thank them all for being here to honor your time, but also to thank them for giving up all of their evenings and commitments and Terry for, you know, date night was a school committee event. But I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that you've done over the years. I believe our students are better for it, and I think that's the primary reason you sought election many, many years ago. So from the Plymouth School Committee, the school department, we have a plaque that you have given out before. We have one for you. And this plaque really, I know that this plaque will be near and dear to your heart as it is to us. And it is something that is special, and I know that you will display it prominently. And anyone who looks at it will know the kind of pleasure that you have and have had working with us as we have had with you. So with that said, this is from the school committee and the community of Plymouth for the dedication, the hard work that you've put forth for the children of Plymouth from pre-K to 12 over many years. So thank you so much, Dennis.
And Dr. Maestas, and just before you make the presentation, Ms. Badger.
I just wanted to say to, I think, I speak for everyone, and I think that, I think that Mr. Begley is a role model for all of us in how to think through things and not overreact really quickly for when you really want to, but you shouldn't. And I know I've learned a ton, and I'm just very thankful that I had the opportunity to serve with you and learn from you. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, and I wanted to say the same thing. All but one year that I've been on the school committee, you've been the chair. And I remember, one of the first things before I ran, Dr. Maestas said, one of the things that he really missed, or that he would like would be to have a chair that could really stay, you know, as a chair for more than a year. And you've definitely lived up to that, and you've, you know, we've voted you in as chair. Welcome that position, and you've been a great mentor, and you've done a great job. And I just, you know, you will be missed.
Thank you. Dr. Maestas.
I just, I just want to thank too Dennis for all of his service and my friendship with him. And it's been, it's been a long last, it still will go on. And, but I really appreciate everything and the kindnesses that you've done for me. Okay? Thank you.
Dr. Maestas.
Yes, the plaque reads, we have another, well, you know what, why don't we just finish?
Lee?
No, I just, I wanted to channel everyone's sentiments. Being the newest member of this crew here, I know the past couple of years now, going into my third year, I really was very lucky to have the support of Dennis. It was a big responsibility to take on, and I was very lucky to have you as a mentor. So thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for your service to this community, and I certainly think we can all agree you will be sorely missed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, and I'm sure you'll keep busy. You can't help yourself.
Another chair of admissions.
So the inscription reads, "In recognition and appreciation of your 12 years of service," which is hard to believe, "to the children of the Plymouth Public Schools, committee member from '06 to '2018, vice chair from 2009 to 2011, and chair from 2010 to 2017." That sounds a little bit odd. The number's off. But anyway, we can fix that. But anyway. Chair for seven years, that's heavy lifting. So Dennis, I'm doing this, I'm presenting for everybody.
The truth is, we saw you get hot under the collar once.
Once.
In 12 years. 12 years, once.
And you recognized it.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. I was going to write some things down, and I thought I probably wouldn't get through it. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you for all the kind words, and thank you.
You're more than welcome. And to your family, thank you very much. Unfortunately, now we have to do the business of the meeting. Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who would like to address the committee who isn't already on the agenda? Please come down and identify yourself. Oh, I see a whole group coming down.
It's actually two people.
Girl Scouts. Girl Scouts. Come on up, girls.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chloe Bean. Our Girl Scout troop is hoping to earn our bronze award by next year. This is the highest award a Girl Scout junior can achieve. To earn this award, we need to pick a project that can make a difference in our world. Our idea is to make a rain and wind shelter at the IBEs parent pickup area. The poor teachers get soaked calling the names, and we sure had our share of rainy days. We plan on fundraising in addition to our cookie sales to earn money for supplies if and when we get approval. We will also be calling on the Plymouth South High Votech students for help constructing our little shelter so it's sturdy for years to come. We are hoping for your approval or guidance for our next step to get our plan in motion. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Troop 66019, Plymouth, MA.
Troop 66109. Welcome. Glad you're here.
66019.
Oh, say that again.
66019.
Committee members? Dr. Maestas?
Yeah, I think what we can do, great presentation. What we can do is work with your troop to be able to make sure that everything that you design and that you want to put on the campus really meets the scope of the building. And our facilities manager will want to be involved, too. So we can all help to work through this to make it happen for you, okay?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for coming in here this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
And I did see another hand. Please come forward and identify yourself.
I thought this would be easy. I'm Mary Lisser. And for those of you who know me, you know I've been around a long time. Dennis, I would just, I am going to do it. I just would like to single out the fact that during your tenure as chairman, town and gown worked together, and more than I remember a few decades ago. And I can't thank you enough. I have slept well, knowing that you were the liaison between the school committee and the town. And I hope when you drive by both Plymouth North High School and Plymouth South High School, you take a minute to say, okay, this was well worth it. Thank you.
Well said, Ms. Lisser. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the school committee? Okay, moving on to the next agenda item is our student representatives, and we'll start with North.
Thank you. Eighteen students traveled to the central region of the Dominican Republic during April vacation to complete service learning projects. Students made connections with the community. Children played games, taught lessons, distributed donations that were collected prior to the trip, and had an amazing experience. The AP exams began today, Monday, May 7th, and will continue through Friday, May 18th. Please check the website for specific dates and times. The junior prom will be held on Friday, May 18th, at the Seacrest and Falmouth, from 6:30 PM to 10:30 PM, 6:00 PM, sorry. The Plymouth North graduation will be held on Saturday, May 20, May 2nd. Plymouth North has the afternoon graduation this year, which will begin at 12:30 PM. The event will be held on the Plymouth North High School football field. In the event of inclement weather, the ceremony will take place in the gymnasium. Upcoming events for North seniors. May Fest, May 16th. Hypnotist Night, May 23rd, 6:00 PM. Last Day of Classes, May 24th. Class Day, May 25th. Graduation Practice, May 29th, 8:00 AM. Dinner Dance, May 29th, 6:00 PM, at the Indian Pond Country Club in Kingston. Graduation Practice, May 31st, 8:00 AM. Convocation, May 31st, 6:00 PM. Graduation, June 2nd, 12:30 PM. Students who have received high honors for first, second, and/or third quarters will receive an invitation to attend the celebration on Tuesday, May 22nd, at the Plymouth North High School in the Performing Arts Center at 8:45 AM, with light refreshments after in the cafeteria. North Voices 2018, the Spring Acapella Concert will be held on Saturday, May 20th, at 7:00 PM. Suggested ticket prices are $5, and the concert will be held at the Plymouth North High School Performing Arts Center. Solo auditions for Plymouth North's acapella groups will be held on May 29th and May 30th. For more information and to sign up for a solo audition, students should go to pnh-sings.com or see Mr. Grossman. Please, please make sure you check your Students' Aspen account to get the most current academic standing. Senior final exams will begin on Monday, May 21st, and will continue through Friday, May 25th. Um, CAS math for 10th grade will be held on Wednesday, May 23rd, and Thursday, May 24th. Senior attendance appeals will be held on Wednesday, May 16th. Appointments are required. Students and parents/guardians will receive notification if an appointment is needed. Attention juniors attending the junior prom on Friday, May 18th. Permission slips for early dismissal on prom day are now available for pickup and student services. Please fill out and have your parents sign. All completed forms are due to student services by Friday, May 11th. Wednesday, May 9th, the students from the technology programs offered at North will be showcasing their projects in the cafeteria at Plymouth North High School. The event will be held at 7:00 PM until 8:30 PM. All are welcome. Plymouth North High School's First Robotics Team 23 will participate in National First Robotics Signing Day that highlights academic scholars and robotics students who have committed to attend college next fall to pursue a degree in engineering. The purpose is to celebrate the STEM education received in the classroom and as members of First Robotics Teams by formally acknowledging this milestone. We'll host a signing event on May 21st, 2018, at 10:10 AM during K Block in the library, where fellow robotics teammates, coaches, administrators, teachers, friends, and family members witness our robotics seniors sign a letter of intent to enroll in their chosen college. We will honor Antonis Pignanis, committed to Harvard University; Stephen Paul, committed to Colorado School of Mines; Colin Reynolds, committed to Worcester Polytech Institute; and Oceanus Trast, committed to Rochester Institute of Technology.
Thank you for that report. And now we're going to go to South.
Thank you. So our AP exams start this week, and Plymouth South High School has 470 students taking AP exams this year. The Plymouth Carver Hall of Fame Ceremony was last Sunday at the Pine Hills Pavilion. South graduates Noel Christmas, Stefan Gustafson, and our former South Assistant Football Coach Paul Coffin were inducted, with many other Plymouth legends. It was a wonderful event with many great stories shared by the inductees. The annual Tech Studies Senior Showcase took place last Wednesday. It was a fantastic night, as always. Parents and advisory committee members were on hand as the seniors presented their final portfolios. Tomorrow at South is Teacher and Artist Educator Appreciation Day, and our rooftop solar project will start this weekend. Our administration met with the contractor and Mr. Costin to review their plan. This weekend, all the materials for the project will be placed on the rooftop for installation to begin the following week. Our prom is this Friday at Indian Pond Country Club in Kingston. It begins at 6 o'clock, and the prom court will be introduced at 9:00. And our Panther TV program aired their first live episode last week. It was a wonderful job by all those involved, and there was an incredible live show by Junior Miles LaGro. We wanted to especially thank the teachers, Mr. Gelder and Mr. Smith, along with Ed TV's Dan Riley for making the show possible. Patriot League's Scholastic All-Star Dinner will be held tomorrow night at the South Shore Country Club. Plymouth South will be represented by seniors Kayla Donovan and Dan Gilbert. Our annual Top 10 Breakfast will take place next Thursday. This event honors our top 10 seniors in the class of 2018 with a breakfast for them and their parents in culinary. Each student will be recognized by an administrator with a summary of their career at Plymouth South High School and their future plans. Our 2018 Art Gala will take place next week on Thursday, as well as in the Black Box Theater. The exhibit will run from 8:30, excuse me, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. And finally, join us on Saturday, May 19th, as Plymouth South High School's own South Avenue performs in concert with an internationally renowned acapella group while in the house. Thank you.
Isabella and Ed, thank you very much for your reports this evening. Any questions, committee members? Now, at this point, I'd like to take a few moments to review some of our open old business items. Dr. Maestas?
Yes, we will do this in honor of Mr. Begley's last meeting. Old business for review, file probably the last review of the year. I think we can probably remove some of these items off the list, Dr. Sorensen. The first one on the list is the Family Emergency Contact Paperwork. And we did supply a memo that we did provide for school committee earlier this year outlining all the changes that we've made to the process through Aspen. So we have done a number of changes that really have addressed emergency contact to the extent that we can. There are still some complications that electronic means can't solve at this point, but we believe that to the extent that we are able to. We do have a process that helps parents minimize some of that documentation that was necessary years ago, but a lot of work has been done to resolve that. And we uploaded a memo earlier today that, you have just asked background information to verify that this work is, at this point, as complete as we can possibly get it.
Let me check with committee members. Do we feel comfortable taking this off the old business list at this point? I'm seeing nods around the table, so we can take this one off. Thank you very much.
The next item is item 2016.5. It should actually read 2016.5.2, because this is the second time it came up on the list. The Plymouth North High School football sounds, football field sound system, it is returned to the old business, and this is because we had an issue on the field earlier this year in November with, one of our teams was on the, on the field, and the sound system was not working appropriately. We have actually remedied the situation. Now, the sound system has been repaired, and we'll have to see how things go next year when they actually test it, and then to the end of this school year.
I can't see any reason why we can't take this one off. Can committee members feel a reason we need to carry this one? Okay.
We can always put it back if it's an issue.
It could come back.
We'll talk next fall.
The next one is recycling, and as you can see, this came on in 2015, and this is something that's, is in discussion, and there is, I'm not going to say there's any movement on this issue, but it's an ongoing issue. It's being worked on right now by Assistant Superintendent Frye. So this is something that we are continually working on, and I think this will stay on the list.
Ms. Hunt?
I just want to let you know, very recently, I got approached by a town meeting member who had been approached by one of his constituents, asking, saying that he's, he's hearing talk that Plymouth Public Schools does not recycle. So I did explain to him about the single stream, and it was, it was a satisfactory answer. But I think, you know, maybe this is one of the items that, when, you know, when we are sharing information to the community, that this is something that we could, we could add to, to one of our newsletters or one of our announcements to let everybody know.
You know, aside from the other items that we've discussed on this issue before, one of the biggest dilemmas that communities are having around the country, and around the world actually, is plastic. China is no longer receiving plastic. The majority of plastic that we were collecting was all exported, and there is a major dilemma on what to do with it. So I think there are a number of things in play that have to really be solved on this issue, not only on how we collect it and dispose of it, but where it goes once we dispose of it, and how it gets managed. It's expensive to get rid of plastic today, and I think in the next month or so, the town's probably going to have to, to deal with how the town itself deals in plastic collection. So this is something to watch. I believe it'll be on the, it'll be on the list for a while.
Thank you.
Any other points on this one? Okay, next one.
The next one is item 2016.13, and this is the Common Core Park informational videos. Dr. Campbell has been working diligently to prepare six different videos that are in the editing stages and production stages. Great shout out to our educational television group. We probably would have had them out by now, but other projects kept leapfrogging this particular one because of timelines and things of that nature. But from my understanding, that they should be well-received, and they are, they will be out, and we'll let you know as soon as they're ready for viewing. So it's, there'll be six videos that will be released this year.
Do you think there'll be more videos to follow that? Because we had listed, we had noted 12 in the last paragraph here.
There's like six, there's six general areas, but there's really more than six videos. So it's a compilation. I do imagine there'll be a number of videos, but initially, there'll be at least six that will go over all the major content areas, student supports, a number of things. So, and I would suggest to keep it on until you've seen it, so you can see the good work that's done, but I have no doubt that you'll be impressed with the work that, as Dr. Maestas said, that the Ed TV staff, as well as the teachers and coordinators who are putting these together, have been doing. It's going to be really good.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, so it'll stay on the list?
I would say yes.
Health curriculum?
The next one is item 2017.0, excuse me, 2017-01.0, and this is health curriculum. This is an item that we have discussed at this table a number of times. Dr. Campbell has been working on this for over a year, really looking at what our health curriculum shapes up to be. He recently wrote a grant and received a grant for $25,000 to really infuse our social-emotional curriculum at the elementary and middle, elementary level, and at the same time, looking at what our model will be moving forward. We are actually working, going to work with the former health coordinator of the Plymouth Public Schools and the dean of the, of the nursing department, excuse me, the health department at Cambridge College to do an audit of our program, to present exactly, through an auditor's perspective, of what our program at the elementary, middle, and high school actually should look like, so we can use that as a guide moving forward in preparation of the FY 20 budget. But we're moving along. It's hard to believe that we'll be 2020 before you know it, but, but that's, that's the model.
The reference in the, in the paperwork says the 19th, and now we're going to make it the 20?
Well, I mean, we've, it'll be the 1920 budget.
Okay. All right. Questions, committee members, on this one? All right, moving on to minimum failing grade.
The minimum failing grade is an issue that was brought up here at school committee. This is item 2017-03.0, and we did discuss this at length. There is some guidance regarding the coordinators in the district and administrators in the district to propose a minimum failing grade number, and that will be in the, in the months to come. And I believe that is something that we would probably have for the beginning of next school year, so that we will have a minimum failing grade that will be established, which will help with some of the issues that we have with students that just have a struggling first term, just can't get out, get out into that, that whole rut of success, and, but we believe that that's something that is going to move forward.
I'm going to ask for clarification on this, because as you referenced it a second ago, you said minimum failing grade, but then you referenced first term. So some districts have minimum failing grade for all terms, and I think we were discussing first term. And the second point I wanted to ask you is, you know how the administrators, at least at the high school level, have, I don't know the title of it, sort of an attendance appeal committee, whereby students can come in and tell the reason why they're over the limit? I was wondering, why couldn't the administrators have a minimum failing grade committee? Because some students legitimately should get the minimum grade, while others shouldn't. And I wonder if the administrators ought to have a council whereby they can discuss the ramifications in each case.
Yeah, good points, Dr. Sorensen. We've had some conversation about the first term, second term, minimum failing grades. Some great discussions, that's why it's been taking so long, because there's really no, there are a lot of opinions on this, this whole concept in general. Some people feel that students may have earned the grade that they received, and some people will look at it quite differently. And we know the impact that a zero can have on an overall grade, how it really inflates or deflates a student's grade, I should say, much more significantly than any other grade that a student much more significantly than any other grade that a student receives during their academic career. So, we've had a lot of conversation about that. Sometimes, issues arise third term where they don't in first term. We talked about different life experiences that may contribute to that. And, we have other things in place that help support those students. But, at the end of the day, we still have students perhaps that struggle in one particular term, and it may not be that first term. So, what we will have to present to this board during handbook is a proposal for a minimum grade, what that would look like, excuse me, what it would be, what it wouldn't be, and the details around that.
And, in regard to your second comment regarding a council or a committee to actually review students in that position, that's something that we have not discussed. But, I can bring it back to our curriculum coordinating committee and also the administrators to get their opinion on how something like that would work in our schools.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hunt?
I do know too, and I think it probably came up in discussion before, that the, I know the Plymouth North School Council discussed this in depth. And, I don't know if South did as well. So, maybe their input could be had when you do have that committee.
Yeah, and that input from both, actually from four secondary schools, came to our Curriculum Coordination Council. So, it was through the principals, the assistant principals, and the academic coordinators, department heads, to get that information and that feedback. We've talked about it at a number of venues. So, that definitely has been taken into consideration.
Any other, any other committee members with observations or comments or questions on this one? Moving now to the home internet access.
This home internet access, item 2017 dash zero six dot zero. And, this is relative to determining, you know, what the percentage of students actually have home internet access. This isn't cellphone with internet capabilities, but actually home connectivity. Our thought is that we would offer a survey to all students with very specific language at the beginning of next school year to get an idea of exactly who does and who doesn't have very specific Wi-Fi capabilities at home that are not connected to cells. So, we're going to offer that through a series of surveys that we have at the beginning of the school year. We should be able to get that data back to you to help us make some decisions moving forward.
Okay, any questions or comments? Ms. Badger?
Will it only be given to the students, not the parents? I'm just wondering if that may collect some data.
You know, we, I think age appropriate will seem that elementary might be more appropriate for the parents. And, we were thinking elementary, we could do it at open houses.
Yep.
You know, so we can, we can, we're going to work on that. And, you know what's nice now is the high majority of our principals have email addresses, which you can do email blasts and do an electronic survey, which we couldn't do that years ago, which I think it'll help to have a number of means.
Okay, go on, we have four to go.
Yes. This is item 2018 dash zero four dot zero, school zone flashing lights. And, this is something that is probably going to be on the list until there's an automated system to manage these. We do not control the school zone flashing lights. Those are managed by the Department of Public Works. The facilities director, Montron, has actually, you know, worked with the DPW to, they have a listing of all our times and when our school zones are to start. And, it really happens when we have a time zone change. Or, we have, not time zone, we have the fallback. Delayed savings time, thank you. But, I think that's, that's one of those issues that we, that we struggle with. And, this is something that's gone on for quite some time. So, they're not automated. They, they don't run off a centralized computer system. They're really manual. And, they take somebody going out to actually adjust these. So, but they're all over town. And, I think some of them are taken care of and some aren't. So, this is something that I'm not sure when it's going to come off the list. But, it was brought up and we have addressed it through our channels to, you know what, I'll tell you, DPW is very responsive. But, you know, they've got a million things going on too. So, that's, we'll just work through these.
Did they provide the crosswalk? Did they actually paint the, that was the last, our last update, right?
I was just going to update, I have not seen a crosswalk when I drive to the gym every morning.
Yeah, we will, we will, we will work on that.
But, I could be blind too. Could be half sleeping at like 5:00 in the morning.
I would say after the winter and all the treatments on the roads, it really is brutal on those, on the line. So, I'll check on that.
They moved it at the end of last fall when they like changed the lights and stuff.
Okay.
So, hopefully they just never put it back out.
I saw JB this morning. I didn't even think about asking him. But, I'll check with him.
It'll get there.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
The next one's item 2018 dash zero five dot zero. And, this is Selectman's request for reactivation of the consolidation committee. Although there has been discussion, I have not been contacted. The school committee has not received a letter yet from the Board of Selectmen to enter into a formal subcommittee discussing consolidation. That has not happened. As soon as we get something, we'll definitely let you know.
What I can add is that I delivered to Selectman Gavaccio the minutes from the previous consolidation committee and the makeup of the committee and the mission statements. I brought that to Town Hall and was giving to her. And, that's the last I heard of it.
Okay, great.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, the next?
Item 2018 dash zero six dot zero, Stonem Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Relative to what happened earlier this year. Mr., Ms. Badger was referring to the tragedy. And, also, we were, you know, discussing the potential gathering of students at our schools. And, that happened. Three of our four schools actually had gatherings of students at different locations throughout our district. But, that has happened. And, there was also another gathering in front of Town Hall on a Saturday. And, we've had a lot of interaction with parents, a lot of interaction with students. I also did a forum, three different, actually two different groups of middle and high school and elementary students, right around the time that this item was put on the agenda. So, you know, I think students did express their concerns at a high level. And, I think there was an opportunity for us to listen. And, yeah, that's how things went.
Okay, I think we can take, Ms. Badger?
I just think that, I think we can take it off for sure. But, I think it's important that maybe we continue those conversations with the students, even though, you know, the tragedy, we don't want to forget about it. But, it has in the past. But, I think it's important that we continually ask those questions to the students about how they're feeling, if they're feeling safe. And, I mean, obviously, they'll tell their teachers, hopefully, and their administrators. But, giving them that sense of empowerment, I think, that you were doing with those student leaders in the buildings, I think would be really helpful continuing. I don't know if you do it once a year or twice a year. I think it's something to consider.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, some of the feedback was, you know, is there a mechanism to hear from kids that aren't identified as leaders? That just, kids that are just being good kids, going to school every day, do their job. And, kids that really feel disenfranchised at some time in their educational life. And, how do we attract them to actually sit down and talk about how they feel? We got invited to some, a class at South Middle School. I'll be, the class invited me so they could present what, you know, their issues around school safety based on what happened in Florida and what they like us to do. And, so, we'll be meeting with, I'll be meeting with them probably next week. Nancy's setting that up. But, yeah, it's, it's, the more we can hear from kids, the more I would like to do that, you know? That'd be great.
Okay, Ms. Hunt?
Just to piggyback on what Ms. Badger said, I think that it's a forum for students. And, I think that they appreciate it. And, maybe, like you said, if they invited you, you're going to come, or you'll come. And, maybe we can let the principals, the building administrators know that anytime any class wants to discuss anything with you or any of us, that, you know, we'd be happy to come and hear them out and listen to them. And, I think the parents would welcome some kind of a yearly opportunity like that as well. And, I know they do get it, but maybe if we can just kind of put that on our radar. I think that they really, the feedback that I heard was that the students really, really enjoyed having the opportunity to discuss things with you.
They really enjoyed the food too, so that helps.
The food helps.
Great, great opportunity. It was such, it was such an enriching opportunity for us to just listen to them. And, it was open dialogue. There was no, nothing held back. And, it was, it was great.
Any other comments or observations on this one? Okay, and now the final one.
The last one is item 2018 zero seven. It came up at last, last school committee meeting. And, this is relative to creating an environment of, you know, customer-first mentality in the district. You know, that our parents, students are our customers when they reach our buildings. And, how do we create that environment and professional development to go along with that? Dr. Campbell did express that we have done professional development, but I think there's still an ongoing need for how do we continue to work at a district level to encourage that we have a customer-service oriented environment here in the school district? So, that's an ongoing issue. We haven't, you know, we'll continue to work at that.
It's an ongoing issue. Do we leave it on or we take it off?
Should we leave it on?
Leave it on. Okay. Any questions on old business? Okay, thank you for that report, Dr. Maestas. And, now let us move to new business. Committee members with new business. All right, I don't see any hands. I'm going to move to the next agenda item, which is the reports and proposals from the superintendent, Dr. Maestas.
Yes, I have a few items to report on this evening. I just want to highlight that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And, I really want our teachers across the district to really know that we really appreciate what they do every day. And, I know it's, I have a renewed appreciation for teaching. I've been in classes and I taught at Nathaniel Morton last week on Thursday. And, I had three hour, a three-hour stint. And, at two hours and 45 minutes, I was ready to run out of there, you know? It's a tough job. It is a really tough job. And, I, I just want our teachers to know that we really appreciate what they do. And, it's a changed dynamic in education. And, you know, all the societal things that we deal with really are at our footstep when we're in the classroom. So, I'll be sending something out later this week to teachers and note from our office. But, just want them to know from, to you, that we really do appreciate them. And, I know you do as well. So, I just want to acknowledge them. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to present at the New England Association of School Nurses Conference. They were a little intimidating. I was on the stage and there were 300 nurses in front of me. And, there were three men in the room. So, it was, it was a great opportunity to really acknowledge the school nurse, acknowledge the two school nurses that their jobs are crucial to education. And, for very similar reasons, as I mentioned before, on teachers and what they do every day. School nurses have a huge responsibility. I shared information with them that we had in the month of March. We had 10,000 school office nurse visits in the month of March. And, the variety of reasons for attending the nurses ranged from a tummy ache to receiving their insulin and other issues that we have, you know, socially-emotional things that happen. But, I'll tell you, it was, it was great to be around nurses. I heard a presentation that was compelling regarding vision and how vision can really impact students at a significant level that can go undiagnosed for an entire educational career, which is compelling to me to really do some more work on that. I'd love to have that same presentation brought here to our even school committee and our administrators just to understand this at a really high level. And, it's, it was compelling to me. I've heard it before, but not at this, at this, at this high end of a presentation. On Wednesday evening, I'll be, I'll be presenting at the Beth Israel Deaconess Patient Family Advisory Council. They've asked for me to come because they want to figure out how this group can raise money to help with some of the issues that we have in the school district, whether it be health issues, social-emotional issues. So, I'm going to go up and present to them Wednesday evening. So, I'm looking forward to spending some time with them to kind of share what we have for the school district and what our, what our, what our kids are dealing with and how they can help us enhance our school system. And, I did have the opportunity to go to the Hall of Fame banquet, which was presented here tonight by Bella. And, it was, it was extremely well done. The presentations were exceptional. And, I like to really thank Ed TV because they, they did a short one to two-minute video on every single candidate. And, they were, they were outstanding. And, to, you know, I just think that it has grown over the years in its professionalism. And, very, very well done. And, I like to reach out to our athletic directors and just acknowledge the work they did. And, also their assistant that they work with in the office. But, they did a fantastic job. And, with that, Dr. Sorensen, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Committee members, any questions or comments to the superintendent? Okay. Retirements.
Yes, we just have one retirement tonight. Brian Sullivan, who's a second shift custodian after 31 years of service from PCIS.
Ms. Hunt?
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I would like to congratulate Mr. Sullivan on his 31 years of service and wish him a happy retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
Okay, now we have our first school improvement plan mid-cycle update. Dr. Maestas?
Yes, tonight, we have Indian Brook Elementary School. You had the extraordinary opportunity to hear from some of the students earlier. We have Mr. Harold here and also Ms. Manfredi, his assistant principal, along with members of the school council. They are here to present their mid-cycle update. So, Principal Harold, I'll turn over the program to you.
Thank you. I wanted where Mr. Begley's last update. Probably your first too. Back then, I think we used to do them all in one night. It was a very long, long evening. So, and over the last several years, I've always presented the format of our plan. So, I've improved it and gone to a PowerPoint. I'd like to start the evening by introducing our school council. Two members who could not be here tonight. Mrs. Jitsi is one of our parent reps. And, she's probably somewhere over Chicago right about now, or in Chicago. Mrs. Michelle Curtin, she is a parent. And, she is actually at Indian Brook right now at a Boy Scout meeting. We had the Girl Scouts earlier, so it's, we're really representing all of our groups today. To my right first, we have Nancy Canducci. She is currently a fourth grade classroom teacher. She's been on the council for many years. I know, all of you know Ms. Page. Ms. Page is now our community rep after being a teacher for, I think, her entire career at Indian Brook. So, she definitely knows Indian Brook's ins and outs, as well as living in the community. We have Ms. McKenzie. She is a modern special needs teacher at Indian Brook, currently working with third grade students. And, of course, Ms. Manfredi, who is the assistant principal. So, I thank them for their support. Yeah, I'll remember. I'm awful with these. It's funny, I mean, we have more technology in Indian Brook. And, I am the worst sometimes at managing it. So, anyway, okay. Just to take a look at, these are the five goals of which the plan is developed around. We have, of course, we've had, as all of our school improvement plans in the district have, the ELA, English Language Arts, and the Mathematics. We also added a goal around science, which we'll talk about a bit. Social-emotional needs and supports, that's something you spoke about just earlier. It's definitely a major concern in schools today, as we all know. And then, cultural awareness and our connection, which we'll explain around our England sister school. Before we begin looking at a school improvement, I had to put in at least one slide of our Wonka Day. It's not all just about academics. We also incorporate and try to encourage some links. We had a phenomenal Read-a-Thon month, of which we did the One School, One Book. And, every child read Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. And, we celebrated it with a surprise Wonka Day. And, I know some, Ms. Badger was there and central office. So, it was a great all-around day. And, then we culminated it with a literacy night that was attended by far the largest number of families we've ever had in the school. The fire department wouldn't have liked it, but it was wonderful to have that many families in totality there.
They didn't like it.
It was great. Also, just some other things. I mean, we always are talking about the academics and the academics, but it's, it's a lot more than the academics. I just wanted to incorporate some pictures here that show some of the lessons going around with music. We have the Big Friends, Little Friends program. So, there's a lot that goes on just beyond the academics. So, again, just to highlight a couple of those. The first three goals of the Indian Brook School Improvement Plan The first three goals of the Indian Brook School Improvement Plan are around academics and we know that's why we're there in the first place. That is our business to bestow upon our students the knowledge to be successful in life. I put this slide in there because our first two goals are on ELA and math. And I know you will all have the same wisdom I have about the state testing, the seesaw kind of approach. We had MCAS, then we went to PARC, now we're to next gen MCAS. And through all those changes, everything has changed. And this was actually a slide that came right out of the Department of Ed's presentation to parents, talking about the increases in rigor and basically answering the question, well, why didn't my child do as well this year with the results as they have done in the past? And they explained in that slide, of course, that they've increased the rigor substantially. And the reason I felt it was important to present this is the fact that we actually, and it's a perfect opportunity to do it this week, where it's teacher appreciation because really it comes down to the teachers. They have by far, beyond my wildest dreams, improved overall instruction and performance of our students. So, what I'll do is in the first slide, it's taking a look at our ELA goal. And of course, our ELA goal is to take a look at how we can improve our students' performance. And I put this in here and I broke it down by the three categories and of course, by each of the grade levels. Even though we're looking at it from a goal standpoint of the totality, how are our three grades doing, grades three, four and five collectively? And as we know in the state, there are two areas of which they see as students being successful and that's meeting expectations or exceeding expectations. So, based on that, that's what these percentages represent, the meeting and exceeding expectations for our students in grades three, four and five. And I actually, looking at the data and I thought it was impressive and that's why I wanted to present it to you in this format, is I didn't just look at it from our aggregate, our total school population, but I looked at it from our special ed population as well as our pre and reduced lunch percentages. And we exceeded the state and the district in all levels and by a margin that we weren't anticipating. Honestly, we were far more surprised. And I actually, the reason I say that, because Nancy, Mrs. Canducci next to me, I wanted to set higher benchmarks for next year, our target. And she said, be aware that, you know, we did extremely well and we did. So, we did set a modest target for this year. That is, actually, the children are taking the test right now, that we'd like to see our total average increase go up about 3% to about 63 and continue that growth. But these scores honestly are truly an accomplishment of our staff because there's no way, I mean, I'm not in the classroom and I second that when Mr. Maestis and Dr. Maestis said about that. It's a difficult job and truly, the accomplishments that we've had in all three categories, even though I'm only highlighting ELA right now, have been just phenomenal. Does anybody have any questions around the ELA one? Of course, I had a couple more Wonka pictures, yes. To move on, math, again, just outstanding in all areas. In all three grade levels, we outperformed both the district and the state. And again, you don't have the data in front of you, but when you look at, even though we can't compare, the Old Test Park is very much like MCAS, although it's increased and these scores are truly a significant increase from our previous years. So, again, a phenomenal representation of the Indian Brook staff and their accomplishments. And again, across the board in all three grade levels. Any?
Yeah, I agree with you. Your scores are outstanding. Even though you didn't make the 63, they're still outstanding.
This is it. I was, yes, I'll be good. And lastly, science. This is something that we actually had, we were declining. We really can't utilize any baseline data right now. The state has, has, we, they developed new standards in 2016 that are being implemented right now, but it's a three-year transition into those new tests. So, 2016, we were, last year, we were, had the 2001 six standards. So, now, we're no longer being tested on those. It's a transition year. Half of we're going to be the old standards, half are going to be the new standards. So, again, we can't really utilize even the current year as baseline data. It won't be until the 2018, 19 school year when we get the first year of the 2016 new standards data. That said, as I said, when you look at how we performed, especially where we were just a couple of years ago, I mean, it's impressive. This has been a year-long initiative around science. It has been our ins, much of our in-service time at our building. Our grade level time has been spent taking a look at the 2016 standards, developing equipment, tubs around how to give hands-on experiments to the kids at all grade levels. So, it's really been an initiative for the last couple of years and it's reflective in our data. So, again, it's great to be able to, you know, sit here and present all wonderful news around our first three goals. Does anybody have any questions related to it? Moving on to goal four, I am going to kind of pass the baton. Ms. Manfredi, Ms. McKenzie, myself, we're all going to, this is, just to introduce it, this is something that we've revamped. PBIS has been around a long time, Positive Behavior Intervention. It's a system that every school developed to kind of look at how we can shape and help kids socially emotionally. So, this is something that we started as a year-long endeavor and we're really rolling out kind of a whole new structure for next year. So, Ms. McKenzie?
Nobody wants to talk. So, for the past couple of years, we have had a PBIS system and there's some really great benefits that we've seen, but there's also some modifications that we'd like to make. So, the first being that we have realigned our PBIS model with the second step curriculum. So, I know we used it years and years in the past, but we're bringing it back. We really feel like social emotional needs are at a massive increase and we want to be able to provide those skills necessary for the kids to be able to reach the academics in the classroom. And those skills, you can see there, are skills for learning, empathy, emotion management and problem solving and they're broken up from K through five, but the same spiral.
Yeah, quite a few of our in-service, building-based in-service time has been based around social emotional and PBIS and we spent a lot of time, I think the next slide is our matrix, right?
Yes. So, what we're doing, yeah, this is the, this will be the new matrix system. We've simplified it. It used to be quite broken down. Yes, for the kids. So, this is what the kids would be looking at. We broke it out K to two and three to five. So, it really looks at the foundational skills that apply in every aspect of school. Doesn't matter if you're in the boys' room, girls' room, cafeteria, classroom, library. It's what are the foundational pieces that kids need and cater to. So...
And we previously, we had used Superflex program in their matrix, which is, you know, sort of a, has a whole curriculum around it. But we really wanted our teachers to have more input, so they helped us come up with this matrix. Gives more buy-in to it. They, they're the experts. They know what, what the kids need. So, or what will work with the kids. So, they helped us come up with these matrices.
And the other one, as you can see, it's far, a little more complex, but it's with the older kids, the upper elementary, three to five. Although the, the structure is identical, we're just breaking it out a little bit more and having higher expectations. So, as the kids go through the years, they become better at independent learners so that once they make that transition to the middle school, they'll be more successful in that environment. So...
The other piece we're adding as well is we are in the process, we're hopefully finishing it soon, a student slash parent handbook for our PBIS program. So, it'll go home to parents, that they can read it with their, their children and they have to sign it and send it back. So, it'll, it'll lay off, we always present this to our PBIS program to parents, but this will be sort of more user-friendly. It'll be right in their hands if they need to refer to it for anything or if we need to refer to it for anything. And hopefully, it'll help, have them take more ownership and buy into it more. So, we're, we're working on a, on a handbook to go home. So, and we'll, each open house will, you know, have a larger presentation around our PBIS.
Where it's new. And then the last piece is a tiered support system that we're going to be working on, which is to take a look at how we support the kids that need increased support and how would that look? For example, we're looking at our neediest of kids and trying to create a mentoring program. So, it'd be a small number of kids, but they truly need that support to see if we can get them to kind of buy into the school with a mentor. So, we're looking at all different elements. And, and the biggest thing is, it's not, I mean, we hear a lot about social emotional and all those pieces, but it's, it's not, we, yeah, we always have those, those tough students that are difficult and we work with them, but it's, it's by and large, all of our population, you know? You, we go down to the cafeteria and we look at how they function in the calf. I mean, we should have foundational skills around that and every child should exercise them on the bus and so forth. Today, I pulled a bus down, an entire bus down to do a little presentation because I showed them clips of their video to show how they're acting and they, they were shocked. But again, that should be embedded. So, that's what all of this is around. It's how we, you know, develop those foundational skills to be successful as we go forward in school. So, as I said, it's, it's going to be a work in progress. It's been a lot of work and again, the teachers have been phenomenal. They've been involved from the get-go. We have parent communications from the office that we're going to be using referrals. We have classroom referral forms that they will go home and we'll present all that at open house. We've actually broke it out, as Starkey knows, I took quite a few open house date evenings so that we can meet one grade level at a time because this is going to be a large presentation for the parents because it's the first time they're going to see a lot of these pieces. Any questions? All right. I'm going to jump ahead to our fifth goal and Mrs. Canducci is going to present.
Okay. So, this is the fun one. We've been talking a lot of how we can kind of share what we do here in Plymouth with our sister school in Plymouth, England. And Mr. Harold's come up with a really cool idea. We're going to have the kids make a documentary because won't that be fun? And we're going to have a student group with students from our third grade population and our fifth grade populations. Both of those, those grade levels study Plymouth as a historical essence in their social studies. And we're going to have them actually make a documentary and do some filming at Plymouth Plantation and do some interviews with local historians. And so, they're going to go, go through, you know, the history of our town as well as how our town works right now. And Jen Mulvaney, who is our, our, what is she, the?
Ed TV.
Ed TV person, thank you. I'm having a word retrieval problem. So, she has, has agreed to join us in this little endeavor. So, I think it's going to be a lot of fun for a lot of kids. So, it'll be good. Anything more to add? Okay.
Mr. Powers, Rob Powers, who's also the social coordinators, is also supporting us with this, using him because he's got all the contacts at the plantation, so. So, those are our five goals, very successful. We've been very pleased again, just to say one more time, I've already said it enough, again, the support of the staff and the teachers, not just the teachers, I should commend our paraprofessionals, everyone who on a daily basis worked the kids for this great success. So...
Okay. Committee members with observations, questions, comments. Mr. Bagley.
The results were extraordinary. Great job, great job, great presentation tonight and I really liked the goal five, the way you described what you're going to be doing. It's, everybody knows it's one of my pet things.
Oh, good.
It's always good to...
I knew that, that's why. I was doing it on a...
That was a great job.
I think there's, there's so much in your presentation that deserves comment. I was certainly going to comment on number five as well. I think sending home the, I wrote it down, the prevent, Positive Behavior Information Systems booklet to parents is so key because, you know, the second grader comes home and says, my teacher said I'm supposed to listen carefully and, you know, so now we're going to have that at home too. And I think that's really important because the kids bring it home and parents don't know what you're talking about. So, I think that's wonderful. The other thing that I want to, I want to join for you, goals three and four, because, you know, we know so much about, about neuroscience now than we ever did. And studies were coming out of Stanford that is showing that when you do MRIs of second graders and MRIs of third graders while they're solving math problems, we now know that the prefrontal cortex is developing while they're doing the math problem. So, that years of math in first and second and third grade develops the prefrontal cortex and what does that do? It regulates our emotions. So, you're actually linking, you're linking these two goals in a neuroscientific way, which I think is, should be fantastic a few generations from now when they finally reach high school. So, that, that's all wonderful, I think. Any other, any other, okay, that's a great report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Early enough too. Eight oh five, not too bad.
All right, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Let's resume the meeting at eight fifteen, please, everybody. Stand in recess for eight, a few minutes. If you'd like to bring us back into order, thank you very much. So, the next item on our agenda is to make the public presentation of the, the annual evaluation of the superintendent. So, let me tell the community that in addition to policymaking and fiscal responsibility, the evaluation of the superintendent is probably one of the most important things that we do and we do it annually. And it's done in the spring each year. And a few weeks ago, committee members received a copy of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Evaluation Form, of which each of the committee members filled out and sent back to me. I then took those forms and I put together a collective compendium of everybody's evaluation of Dr. Maestis and I will now publicly share that with the community this evening. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, on their form, they list four standards that we evaluate the superintendent on. We also evaluated the superintendent on his individual goals that we approved some months ago. And then the third part is the overall compendium. So, I'm going to review them, not in complete detail because there's a lot of verbiage here, but there are four standards and I'm going to review each of the standards and parts of the standards. All of this will be presented in written form. Committee members have copies of it and it is a public record so people can read the details of the forms. The first standard is instructional leadership. There are four areas under instructional leadership. Dr. Maestis received professional, excuse me, proficient to an exemplary rating on each of the four categories of the first standard. He received commendations on many and there was just one recommendation and that recommendation referenced school council reports where committee members felt that some of the data that we received from school council reports could be more robust. Of course, tonight's presentation had excellent data. Moving to standard number two, which was the management and operations. It has five categories to it. In all of the, in all of the categories, the superintendent received commendations, I mean proficient to exemplary in all of the areas and commendations in all areas. The prevention program, the recruitment and hiring, the, the creation of a budget that was transparent and expertly delivered were areas that were highlighted as commendations. On standard three, which is the family and community engagement, it has four categories to it. Here again, the superintendent received proficient to exemplary in each of the four categories. There was one area marked in the whole evaluation on all of the pages that required, or committee members felt that there could be an area for improvement and this was the area, the school committee member or members indicated that more general information to parents and more communication with parents struggling with school-related problems could benefit the individual families and the school system as a whole. So, that was the one recommendation that came out of that standard. All the rest were proficient to exemplary. The fourth standard from the Department of Ed, of Elementary and Secondary Education is the professional culture standard. It has six categories to it. Here again, the superintendent received proficient to exemplary in each of the six categories. There were many commendations provided under these six categories. And there was an area that the committee felt that communication be improved, it sort of dovetails one of the earlier ones. Here again, the committee felt that communication between the committee and the administration regarding families in conflict or problems when in the system could be, could be better, could be improved with more communication. So, that completes the evaluation under the standards. The next part of the evaluation is the superintendent's goals. We had approved six goals and we could, we could rank these goals as not met, met or exceeded. There were six goals. All of the goals were marked as met or exceeded with particular areas of highlighting such as the first goal was under, was the result of the comprehensive district review done by DESE and it was, it was marked as met. The second goal under student loan... The second goal under student learning, here again, the coordinated program review, the CPR, and the superintendent's participation in that enabled the rating to be a met. The district improvement plans, here again, marked as met. We felt that Dr. Maestis' decision to teach a lesson in many classrooms in all schools not only gave him, as he said earlier this evening, not only gave him a perspective on teaching the modern-day student, it also, committee members also noted that made him visible and more accessible. The district improvements, particularly as it relates to the prevention program, was marked as exceeded. And the new website is up and running. That was also marked as met and exceeded. And the final goal, which was district, the district improvement, which really represents the facilities, the committee felt that even though Plymouth South is just about completed, that for the purposes of this evaluation, that particular goal was also marked as met. So the conclusion here of all pages of the evaluation, that in conclusion, the Plymouth School Committee's 2018 evaluation of Dr. Maestis revealed that he received a rating of proficient or exemplary in each of the four standards, the school committee also concluded that Dr. Maestis successfully met or exceeded each of his 2017-18 goals. Furthermore, the Plymouth School Committee believes that under the leadership of Dr. Maestis and his administrative team, the children in the Plymouth Public Schools are receiving an education of high quality. Equally important is the fact that, in an ever-increasing manner, Dr. Maestis continues to set the bar high, and as a result, our students are achieving and excelling. Each year on many levels, our schools are better than they were the previous year. The school committee believes that we are fortunate to have Dr. Maestis' commitment and untiring effort to inspire our educational community to persistently strive to achieve great things. We recognize that advances in the area of teaching and learning are vital to building an educational program of high quality, and it is apparent that our superintendent and his administrative team are always focused on best practices and best programs for the modern-day student. At the same time, Dr. Maestis has developed strong support for Plymouth Public Schools from stakeholders across the town of Plymouth. The conclusion here is that Dr. Maestis' evaluation for this year is rated quite high in all areas. Committee members with additions or questions or corrections. Ms. Badger.
I just have a question on, can we, I don't know, I think maybe I just was under the impression that we had to decide if it was met or exceeded. I didn't know that we could be proficient and exemplary, like, and at the end evaluation. My question is, I think it was supposed to be like a, bring it all together, so I didn't, I don't know, I was confused by the proficient and exemplary, and I think it's confusing for, I mean, I would think for Dr. Maestis, if I got an evaluation, I was like, I met it and I exceeded it, which one did I do? That's my only.
Well, I think, I struggled with it.
Yeah.
Because we have seven committee members.
Different.
And there were some, sometimes, when the votes were tied, and that happened.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I had to pick.
Okay.
But I felt that I could put both of them down because I felt it sort of moved us in the positive direction as opposed to the negative side.
Okay. We met it, we exceeded it. Yeah, either way, he's.
Okay. Dr. Maestis?
Well, I read through your comments tonight, and, you know, I will tell you, I'll, we have a lot of work to do. And I think our school system is fortunate to have a great deal of committed people that are very receptive to our leadership. And I say "our" because I have a very committed team that helped me to guide the district in what we believe is the best interest of their advancement in education. And I firmly believe that the direction that we're going really reflects what you would expect from me. I think you set high expectations of me. I think it's important that everyone that works in the Plymouth Public Schools understands that we all have accountability measures, and that starts with me. And I think it's important that people understand that although there are some highlights and points that have gone well, there are other points that we need to continue to enhance because it will help our district to get better. And, you know, I know, I've been with this group of people here for a lot of years, and I know that they're committed to helping this district be what we want it to be. And I've said this in public in venues up and down Plymouth, we're a good school district. But we are striving to be a great district, which is somewhat difficult, but it's our challenge, that is our challenge. And I know that we're committed to looking at those adjustments that can help us to be a great district, and not only for a short period of time, for a long time. And I think the structures that we have been able to put in place will allow us to do that. It's taken some time to get where we are, and I know, you know, tonight we talked about the leadership of the school committee. I mean, to see where our district has come in the time that many of you have been on this committee, I, it's hard to believe we were where we were 10 years ago, 12 years ago, and we didn't have two high schools, new, new high schools. We didn't have all these things, our VPA program, and, you know, some of the articles that are in the newspaper have highlighted the transition of where the district has gone. But I think it all stems from the expectation that you have of this team and what you have of me. And by no means will we ever stop and not reflect on the past, but be motivated to work hard and committed for the future. So with that said, Dr. Sorenson, I, you have my commitment, I speak for my team, our commitment to continue to work hard because they really do support me in a way that I couldn't, I couldn't explain. So I want to thank you for your comments tonight, but also you have my word and my commitment that we've just begun.
Okay, thank you very much. So this brings us to the next item, which is the superintendent's contract tells us that he can receive a performance incentive amount for $1,000 for each of four goals. And obviously, he met all of his six goals, the cap is $4,000 for four goals. So at this point, we would entertain a motion, which we're going to have to take orally after the motion because my system just went down and I can't get back on right now, so. But I will entertain a motion. Mr. Begley.
I'll make the motion that we provide the, support the paying of the bonuses for Dr. Maestis.
And that's seconded by Ms. Burgess. Is there any questions to that? Okay, so, show of hands, please, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. So now we have a perennial agenda item, which is the school choice item. Dr. Maestis?
Yes, tonight, let me move back to that agenda. I jumped, jumped ahead one, so give me one, give me one second to.
Oh, it's bumping around.
Yeah, that's me. I, I lost my concentration, as I do from time to time. Okay, so tonight is our annual public hearing regarding school choice. The purpose of this agenda item is to engage in a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution to not participate in the school choice program for the school of 2018-19. And this is a requirement of Mass. General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B. And the Plymouth Public Schools, for as long as I've been in the district, have had this on the agenda every year. And it really is to make a decision if the Plymouth Public Schools will allow school choice. School choice is a provision in Mass. General Law that will allow children from outside of Plymouth to attend Plymouth. And we have not done that. We've done that for a number of reasons. It's primarily for space issues, and we really didn't want to create a situation where we would create an overcrowded situation in the district. Keep in mind, if you, if the district were to choose to go into a school, a school choice, they would actually have to honor that for the term of that child's education. If they came in in first grade, they'd have to graduate. If we stopped it, if we, you know, school choice is yearly, let's say we did it for one year, those students still would have the option to stay. Keep in mind, school choice is very competitive in some parts of Massachusetts, down the Cape, it is, it is a big item down there, and schools, schools down in the Cape have a lot of competitiveness with school choice. So we have not participated. I recommend that we hold firm and we continue to not accept school choice or engage in school choice. So that is my overview on the option, and I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Sorenson.
Committee members with any questions, clarification, or motions. Ms. Burgess.
Yeah, first of all, it would, the thing that would seriously affect would be our voc tech programs, right?
Yeah, I think, I think we'd have to be specific. If you, if you were to allow school choice, you would, you would probably do it, you know, it's hard to just say high school, you know? We'd have to, we'd have to come up with something specific because we have two high schools and a vocational program, so.
We have enough students to fill those slots.
We have more than enough.
Themselves, that's the problem.
We have more than enough.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I move that we, that we accept.
The recommendation.
Not the recommendation.
I have a motion to accept the recommendation, seconded by Ms. Hunt. Is there any other questions to that? Okay, and now we can vote electronically, if everybody's up and on.
Got myself confused, I'm sorry. I don't want to hit the button. We're voting yes to not, it's like a double negative.
We are voting yes.
I didn't get, I didn't get my team to come up to vote.
Yes, okay.
Show if you did vote.
Yes is a no, no is a yes.
I voted on the last as a no, right? That we did a handball, I also hit yes.
No, it says yes to this.
I must have counted the last one towards this one.
You all right with that, or do you need to change it?
I'm all right with it.
Okay.
You both can, because yours is coming up red on, oh, it just came up now.
I was, my last night, I got confused.
He was deliberating in his mind.
Well, we all got, everybody voted in favor of the superintendent's recommendation. Okay, we have a couple of job descriptions to work on.
Yes, we have two tonight, and we've moved past regular kind of teacher roles to different roles within the district. The first is academic coach, and we changed the title to an academic coach because we have math coaches, literacy coaches, and you never know if other types of academic needs will come up. And these people work primarily with our staff, so when you see fantastic results like Mr. Harold shared, there's a lot of people behind the scenes working with our teachers on strategies for kids for math and literacy infusion. It's really remarkable now, having a child in the elementary school, what they've been able to show these teachers and how they can read, and it's really remarkable. So we really had to revamp this completely. It was quite outdated, what we did have in place, and, but there, right now, we have math and ELA academic coaches within our district.
Ms. Badger.
I just have a question, and it could be, I'm just reading it wrong. So under job goals, number one, it says, "Improve student performance by promoting best practices in specific content areas or areas to PPS staff." Is that an extra areas, or am I, like, just don't?
I think it's content area but also teaching strategies. So it's not just the, you know, the math itself.
So content area or teaching areas?
Maybe instructional.
Instructional, yeah.
Yeah, because it's kind of instructional strategies.
I was like, I don't know. I don't understand what this is saying.
I can add that.
Thank you.
Because they kind of do both, it's the math, math, I couldn't do, and then the instructional strategies. Yep, absolutely.
That's it.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion if anybody has any questions. I move that the job description for academic coach be accepted and approved as presented.
Seconded by Ms. Trusselli. Any other questions on the motion? I guess, Ms. Badger?
Do you accept my change?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't realize, I didn't know if that was an actual change or not. Yeah, with changes made.
I'll make that change.
I'm getting nods around the table.
Okay.
Okay.
And the second.
Welcome to take the vote on that one.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, next one, which is the consulting teacher of literacy.
This is another kind of support person within the people, within the district. And we had a kind of modified, but we needed to change a lot because of state reading assessments. We worked very closely with Dr. White on putting this together, as well as the individuals who are in the jobs. We've gotten their feedback as well, the people who do this. So this is a position that we have in a couple of the schools, but it's growing. Sometimes some reading specialists are becoming consulting teachers of literacy because it's really much more of a wraparound approach. So this is something that, it's a unique position, but it's very important to the district.
Floor is open?
I'll move it.
Ms. Burgess moves it. Seconded by Ms. Badger on a question? I have one, and it's probably my ignorance. Number 10 references assist teachers in reading and writing in the elementary classroom. And if the role is expanding.
It is, yep.
Should we drop elementary classroom?
We probably should, yep. It's a great idea. Can do that.
So with that correction, the motion and second are okay? Any other corrections? Okay, we'll take the vote then. Okay, everybody voted in favor.
And I think you'll see soon on our new website, on the HR page, there'll be a job postings piece where these will all be housed, as well as obviously electronic school board through the approval. So we're very excited, they'll be front and center, we won't have to search. So we're in the process of adding those, thanks to Mrs. Colby and Mrs. Dargie and all our helpers.
The next item here is fundraisers. Are there any fundraiser observations, discussions, questions? Ms. Badger?
I just have, do we share, I mean, obviously, this is in electronic school board and people can access it, but do we ever just distribute it to the PTA presidents, just, or any president just to say, okay, look at Cuckoo Charlie, you make 30% on, when you can do X, Y, and Z, and you make 80 or 90%?
Yeah, we don't, because I know just in my own dealings with PTAs that they typically go through that themselves. I've found that through the treasurer and through their meetings that that's their thing. We haven't given them consultation on, you know, the return in investment. My office has been more about the appropriateness of the activities as they relate to students and making sure that we're keeping track of those funds, but we haven't, we haven't shared that directly. They're sharing it with us. So they're documenting it someplace as they submit that form. Some of them are, and we've had this conversation before, some of them, they do with a particular purpose of fundraising, and some of them sometimes are more of a tradition, a school spirit sort of thing, or, you know, a community spirit. And one would hope that if there's one that is for fundraising and you're doing it over and over and over again, that's not showing a return in investment, that they would change their practices. But sometimes it also comes down to the individuals, you know, are really passionate about doing that particular activity. So it's a very touchy thing regarding that, but I do think that this has helped that process because there is an exchange back and forth with all the organizations, whether it's PTA, the boosters, you know, all the groups that are doing it.
Ms. Hunt?
I think sometimes, too, it's ease.
Yeah, no, I was saying the same thing.
I know one of the teams for the, for the boosters, I was involved with, it was just an easy, quick, you don't have to do anything, come to Chili's and, you know, get a contribution, and it wasn't nearly as much as it would have been if they had sold Yankee Candle or something. But sometimes it's quick timing, get it in, and the easier the better. And then they learn that maybe they won't do that next time.
Okay, any other observations on the fundraising? Okay, next item is reports and proposals from committee members. Ms. Hunt?
Okay, I have a few. I'll go real quick. First of all, I know, you, Dr. Maestis already said it, but I did want to express my gratitude towards all the teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week. Some people might know this, might not know this, but I probably mention it every year, that in 1984, the PTA started Teacher Appreciation Week. And it's usually, usually the PTAs are the ones that go in and do things for the teachers. I know at the high school level, that doesn't always happen. They don't necessarily get those big dinners or the gift cards or anything. I personally sent an email to all of my kids' teachers when they were in high school, so if any parents are watching, that's a great way, because they really don't hear from parents unless there's a problem when they're in the high school level. So I just wanted to put my personal plea out there to thank all of the teachers. And today is Nurse Appreciation Day, so that was on my list, I know Dr. Maestis said that. But my two things, we had a But my two things, we had a DVC Distinguished Writers Committee meeting last week. The dates are somewhat finalized for the first week in August. The problem that's holding it up is there, they haven't decided what teachers are coming yet. They do have the students chosen, there's 15 students coming, or there's 14 students coming. They're deciding on three teachers. And then, just so that you know, there's Matsuo Uachi, who's the diet chairman, which is the equivalent to Senator or President, or a House of Representatives. I know they're on, they're equal in Japan, so there's not one that's above another. And he was here in 2010 as part of the 20th celebration, so he's gonna be coming. Turo Aioke, who is a Kokomura staff member, he's coming. Tyler Gilbert, who is the Jet translator, is coming. And Yurimi Ito's coming, she comes every year. So they're coming, they're planning on arriving on August 2nd. They'll stay in Plymouth till the 7th, and then they'll spend the 8th and the 9th in Boston, and head out on the 10th. So they've got tentative, I don't, I don't think that they actually have the plane tickets purchased yet because they don't have the teacher names, but that's what's being held for them. I do have the committee in place to start the planning, the itinerary, we've already called the hotel, and we're moving forward with that. And then the last thing is, I just wanted to mention, too, I know, Dr. Maestis, you didn't mention it, but I did attend the indivisible Plymouth meeting this week, and it was really, I was very proud that Dr. Maestis actually spoke to mostly precinct or town meeting members about everything that's going on in the school, the budget process. It was very open, it was very transparent, and I think it's a, a great step in the direction to just make sure that our, our community, I believe they invited you because they really wanted to hear the status of the schools. And I got to actually got up and talk and follow you, and I really had nothing to say after you got up because you said everything that was in my speech. But I just wanted to let you know what a great job you did, and everybody thinks it's wonderful that you were able to attend.
That was great. I didn't mean to talk so long.
Ms. Badger?
I just have a couple of quick things. So I have wonderful posters for the Pan Mass Challenge Kids. It's the sixth year, and Dr. Maestis is gonna lead our five-mile bike riders.
Right, baby.
So it's gonna be a lot of fun, he's gonna speak, it's gonna be so much fun. So, you know, there's opportunities, even if you don't have small children, you can volunteer, or you can bring your children that you know, and they can ride, or you can just make a gift, it all goes to cancer research, and, and it's just a great event. So if anybody has any place they want to post these, let me know.
Can I comment to that real quick? If you want your child to go on a, a nice ride that's protected, no traffic, and it's a wonderful opportunity, kids, to ride on the, the state forest, and there are people everywhere, and it's a great event, you know? So it encourages health, people get out, there's music playing, there's food, there's all kinds of stuff. So it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, there's the Revolutioner sometimes there, we've got Pilgrim, I forget what.
Gobbles.
Thank you, Gobbles is usually there, makes an appearance. So it's not just the ride, it's a big family day, and if it's beautiful, like it was last year, at the ride when it's over, you can go and take a swim. So let's hope it's beautiful and not like a torrential downpour, as it has been in the past. And so the next one is the Plymouth Public Schools Alumni Association, our drawing is gonna take place for the best seats in the house for graduation on May 24th. So we'll have till May 23rd to purchase your tickets, and that's for both South and North, it's four tickets, and just, it's, and it all goes to scholarship, so we need more people to participate, so we can give out bigger awards every year. And then we have a verbal confirmation for a new PAC director, Dipna Thomas. Dipna, 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 sorry.
Yeah, and we know her.
Yes, and she's, we're really excited to have her join, and she's gonna be a really great addition to the collaborative. That's it.
Excellent. Ms. Burgess?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I went to Beatlemania, the fundraiser for the schools. I was the only one there, I couldn't believe it. But they got me in the hook hole and going, ah! It was Denise did, did her job. Anyway, but, no, but it was, it was a great event, actually, and a lot of people attended. It was really good. So, anyway, that's, that's all I have because, well, you can go on with your thoughts in the next.
Well, I, I attended the honors breakfast here in this school, and they're always well done, and it's always great to see all the parents come out, and all the huggings, and the congratulations to all the honors. It is great, it's always a great, great venue here for that. Anything else? Mr. Trusselli?
Yeah, I went to day on the hill. It was a really great day. I met, I met Patty there with some of our student representatives, and it was, it was really eye-opening, I think, in terms of some of the language that we need to be having with our legislators. A big one was, you know, the unfunded mandates came up. MASC, you know, had some dignitaries that spoke, and it was eye-opening for sure. And I think these are things that we need to embrace a little bit more and definitely continue to chat with. This is my wheelhouse here, so, you know, just to kind of learn a little bit about what some of the issues are that we face in terms of education, and, you know, the big ones, compliance, the unfunded mandates. And I know, you know, in reference to Teacher Appreciation Week, we don't realize how much goes on behind the scenes, and I think, you know, it was definitely a, a great experience for our school committees around the state, just to learn about the advocacy that we have and the things that we should be discussing with our local legislators. So it was a successful day, the food was great. They had moved it from the State House, we had the meeting originally, I think it was at the Freemasons, yeah, which was cool, it was not too far from the State House. Then we went to the Hall of Flags for lunch, and it was, it was great. And some of our local legislators were there, Matt Maratori was there, we were able to see a few people and chat with them, so it was a great day. And then Margie and I, we attended, we had gone to the Senior Showcase Awards last Wednesday evening at Plymouth South. We did, yeah, and they had some really great, you know, displays, Deco was there, it was really great to see, you know, them showcase some of their hard work that they did, and the kids.
Sometimes it was, there were so many people.
So many people.
It was hard to get near the.
Yeah, but they're just remarkable kids, and just the work that they did. So job well done to them, and forward to the next.
Yeah, it was good.
It's a busy time.
Do you know what day North is this week? What day is North?
It's Wednesday, yep.
Yeah, Wednesday this week.
Wednesday at 7:00.
While we're on, we have the on-the-road manamet coming up.
Yes.
They're in the spring calendar.
I'm, I'm gonna be able to make it. Is anybody else gonna make that? You'll make it?
I was planning on doing that, it's my last event thing.
So we have, at least we have, we have a few.
Lee?
What time, what time was it at?
On the road, it's Friday morning.
Yeah, no, I know, what time was it? Yeah, I can go.
You can go, so that's for.
I can go with my PT.
I didn't want to be the only one, that's why.
No, you're, you're gonna be, have company.
I'll come if my PT, if I can, if I get out early.
I'll be there.
Okay, the next item is PYDC.
Yeah, PYDC is gonna be meeting this Friday, and, what was I gonna say about it? Well, never mind. It, it left me, but it's, but anyway, it's, it's meeting this Friday.
Okay, building committee, we didn't have a meeting?
That'll be this Thursday.
That's coming up, that's right?
Yeah.
Second Tuesday.
Oh, I know what I was gonna say about PYDC, is I will, I won't be able to stay long because I've got manamet on the road. We've got two things.
That's right, I'm in the same position.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go, and then.
We'll get up and go.
Yeah, that's it, okay.
Okay, personnel?
Yes.
We only have one short-term maternity leave and two resignations to report this evening, and one classified appointment as well.
Okay, thanks for that.
Yep.
Homeschool.
We have solar. Mr. Costin has been waiting all night for this baby.
Solar.
Oh, solar, I'm sorry, yes, yes. Oh, it's not on my, it's not on my agenda.
Oh.
All right, go ahead.
I think Mr. Bagley took it off, this is the last meeting.
You need a good joke.
So, solar joke. As our, as our reps said, our, our student reps, that we, at South High School, we have started mobilization. This is crane weekend, we'll be lifting in one day all the panels up on the roof, and construction will start right after that point, and it's gonna be going on through June 29th. We have an extensive plan, which I, we just received, we've been working on all day, and I'll forward to the school committee for the next update. But construction will be completed by June 29th, and then after that, they'll be doing commissioning and testing. So it's a very aggressive plan. We've worked on parking, quarries, we've, we've had a, a large meeting in the past week. So I think we're very comfortable with the, very comfortable and very organized plan, I think Amoresco's put forward. As far as the other parts to our project, tomorrow I have a conference call with Amoresco's attorney and our attorney, Rick Holland. We are trying to finalize the contracts for the battery and the lighting, field lighting. So we're hoping to get those finalized in the next couple of weeks, those need to go up to DOE, DOE R also. And the final part is the parking canopies, which, again, is in the hands of EverSource, and that could take up to about six months, they have six months to, to do the review on those. So we're, we're progressing.
All right, any questions? Good work, sorry, thank you very much. And now the homeschool.
Yes, tonight, Dr. Sorenson, we have one homeschool plan that has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and, and does meet the requirements set, set forth by the district, and I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation. Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the homeschool plan.
The second, Mr. Bagley. Any questions to it? All right, we'll take the motion then.
Yep.
That's unanimous, thank you. The warrant?
There we go. Whereas the school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant, number S051018, dated May 10th, 2018, in the amount of $918,159.06 as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Burgess is the second?
No, of course.
You have a question?
No. Ms. Badger's the second.
No, Badger.
She was the second, I didn't.